Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting for Monday, January 3, 2022, for City Council to order. I'd like to start tonight with a prayer from Pastor Scott Paisley from Cavalry Baptist Church, if we could.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we can trust in you at all times, that we can pour out our heart before you, that you're a refuge for us. We're thankful that as we begin a new year, we thank you for a fresh start. But, Lord, these are still challenging times, and so we ask for your help. We're pouring out our heart. We're making our requests known to you. We do ask, Lord, for your help and for wisdom granted to our city, our city leaders. We pray for Mayor Curtis, his administration. We pray for the ladies and gentlemen who serve in this city council and their willingness to do so. We ask that you would encourage them in the year ahead, Lord, that you would grant the wisdom and the help that's needed in making right decisions for our city. We do thank you for those who serve us and to maintain law and order and to protect us. We pray for Chief Passwater, the police department. We pray for the fire department as well. We thank you for those who are willing to risk their lives for us, and so we uphold them before you and ask for your help. Those who've served long, we thank you for them. For those who will be recognized this evening, who are just beginning, we thank you for them and their willingness to serve, and we pray that their journey would be a long and a safe one. Father, we do pray for Bradley. We pray for their police department and the heartache and the shock that they're dealing with. We pray that you'd help them and strengthen them, meet their needs. We do thank you, Father, that those who perpetrated this crime have been apprehended. We do pray that justice would be served, but we do pray for their families. Many are hurting. Many are overwhelmed by all of this. We think of the Rittmanic families and for Officer Tyler Bailey, and we pray for healing for him and raise him up and bring him out of the hospital. But, Father, we pray for those who've been apprehended. We pray, Father, that you'd work in their hearts. They consider their ways. We pray they might turn to you and find forgiveness and redemption in Jesus Christ. Now, for this meeting, for the things that are before this city council, decisions that have to be made, we ask for your help, for your wisdom, and for your blessing. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Before we start the city council, if we could take a moment and a moment of silence for Sergeant Marlene Rittmattick and Officer Tyler Bailey as he recovers. Thank you. The city council will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have several public comments tonight. When you come forward, please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments will be limited to three minutes. There'll be no personal attacks upon the council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up is Matt Smargesi.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, City Council. I'm here today to talk about the Veterans Home. Some of you may already know me, but very few probably know that I'm a veteran. I spent 13 years in the National Guard. I spent 19 months in Iraq and about two years in Central America. As a veteran, I'm imploring the city council and the community as a whole to support this effort for the Veteran Housing Project. It is somewhat shocking that the U.S. Department of HUD estimates that there's 40,000 homeless veterans on any given night. Of the population, the homeless population, 13% of the homeless population is veterans, while only 7% of the population as a whole is veterans. This is a great stain on our prosperous nation and the smaller communities that allow it. The actions that we connect to fully eliminate veteran homelessness with a federal budget of nearly $5 trillion is shocking that we can't get this done. While it's appalling that that's occurring, it's also heartening to know that there's 45,000 veteran charities registered with the IRS. But it's also disheartening to know that any of these are needed at all. I can't think of any other function of government that, well, spare a few, that are worthy of government funding other than veteran housing. While all of America has become a little more jaded, we've all started to hate each other a little more. I'm hopeful that we can come together and support this worthy cause. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Stanley Olenjack.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, my name is Stanley Olenjack, and I am a Vietnam Combat Veteran, United States Marine Corps. I am the Chairman of the Veterans Assistance Commission of Cankey County. Why do I come here tonight to talk to you? I do it for my fellow veterans, still fighting the war for inner peace. I also have experienced that war. I am here this evening to ask that you pass a yes vote on the proposed 14-unit veteran housing project on South Washington Avenue. In fact, I'm asking for unanimous yes vote from the members of the city council. The city council has a unique opportunity this evening in saving Private Ryan, saving him from self-destruction. They went into the military to serve their country. They planned to do their service and to leave. They didn't plan on ending up like this. They are like the Energizer Bunny on TV. They just keep going and going, trying to find their way home. And from within their ranks have come the great patriots who have led our nation to victory time and time again. They have never failed our nation, and our nation should never fail them. They are part of the 1% of Americans who stopped their personal lives to serve their country. They risked everything, their lives and their health, all for duty and country. And now, ladies and gentlemen, it's your turn to pay them back. Pay it forward, as it is said, with a yes vote, "to care for him who shall have borne the battle," as quoted by President Lincoln at Gettysburg. They need your help and support. Do the right thing, and let our veterans know that he's not heavy. He's my brother. He's not heavy. He's my brother. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Next up is James Wasser.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, councilmen and women. Certainly, I was here last time. There was a thing in the paper, it was kind of funny, that said that I don't beg, but I, being a fan of The Temptations, they had a song years ago called "Ain't Too Proud to Beg." Well, I am not going to beg. I'm going to ask honorable men and women to do the honorable thing. You have the chance to really be the leader. You don't have to be the lead dog, okay? But you can be a leader and show them that you care. Let the other people follow us. When I look at this, I'm involved in Vet Court. I'm a mentor. We've had men come through that are homeless. Just think tonight, would you want one of your kids in a cardboard box? I don't think so. I remember when I finally really came home after 40 years, I made it my goal and my job to make sure that I would fight for veterans' benefits until the day that I can't breathe anymore, because I look at it this way, for those that had lives that were too short, I have a chance to speak for them as they would have if they'd still be with us today. So that's the way that we can honor them. I look at everything, what's going on today, the government. We talked last time. It's the only true entitlement, is what we served our country for. I'll never lose that term. I am a veteran, just like you folks. I was a city council member for your entire life. I still belong to the greatest brotherhood and sisterhood in the world, and I'm proud of that. But we need help from you also. And I know I only have three minutes, but it's when you see people and you, because I deal with Buddy Check 22, as I talked about, suicides. And by the time this meeting's over tonight, you're going to have two people leave us, because they just have the issues and they can't get them taken care of through the government. Okay? You are the government. You have a chance to do that. And people, I always say, "Well, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood." Really, what does fit? Nobody should fit better than a veteran back in his own community when he finally gets the chance to come home. So I'm asking honorable men and women to please do the right thing and vote yes for what's right for the men and women that are on them streets right now. And those are the ones that were in the mud and in the boats and in the water when you guys were probably still young, many of you, because I'm three-quarters of a century. So, and I'm proud of that. But it's your time now to step up and walk the walk. Thank you very much.
Karen Spodansky.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis, councilmembers. I too spoke to you last time, so I'll keep it very brief this time. There was another program that I thought about that I really wanted to bring to your attention, that I hope by the time this community permanent supportive housing unit comes available to us, is available to our community as well as our state. It's called Onward Bound. It is actually in the state of Texas, the city of, or the state of New York is trying to bring it. It is sponsored by the VA, and it is putting county veteran service officers in touch with every member that is being discharged from every branch of the military. Those members would be with us as they are discharged, and we would be their buddies. And hopefully, that will help them have places to go. But as we know, so many people come back home, and they've changed, and sometimes their family members don't know how to handle that. Sometimes their girlfriends or boyfriends don't know how to handle that, and they're left on the streets, or they don't know how to handle themselves. So they need a place to go. So we'll be there to help them, hence the word "supportive." And I want you all to remember that, that this is a supportive unit. This facility will have that support, and your community will be there to support them. And we will be there for them. And I hope that you will all back them and have that support for them also. Thank you.
Next is Eric Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Thank you very much for letting me speak here today. My name is Eric Peterson. I am the founder of Project Headspace and Timing, a nonprofit that I started in 2017 after a fellow teammate committed suicide. It seems crazy to think, but over a decade ago, I deployed with Charlie Company, 1178th Infantry, out of Cankey Key, and we deployed to Afghanistan from 2008 to 2009, where I served as a team leader and acting squad leader. During that time, my vehicle drove over an IED on the Fourth of July, which was coincidentally not the way I wanted to celebrate my Fourth of July, but nevertheless. When I came home, when Charlie Company came home, this community welcomed us with open arms, and it made us realize why we served, who we serve, and what it means to be proud to be an American. And before I got off that bus, our first sergeant looked at us and he told us all to thank God before we stepped off, because it was a miracle that our casualties were as low as they were. And if only he would have held his breath, maybe he would have understood that he shouldn't have said that, because shortly after that, that's when the casualty numbers started to go up. Despite how difficult everything was and how dark my own darkness is and the battles that I've struggled with, especially over the past couple of years exacerbated by the Afghan withdrawal, I always tried to cling to the words said by those much wiser than me that came much, much, much before me, one of which was Edmund Burke. And he said that the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil was for good people to do nothing. Homelessness is evil, much less amongst a group of people that were willing to die for the very country that they don't have a home in. And being in the positions that you're in, you are the public good. So being that that is evil and that you are good, can you truly sit here today and abide by doing nothing? Because after this meeting is over and when everybody leaves, I don't expect anybody to remember a single word I said or a word that anybody else said, but inevitably, you will remember us and you will think of the veterans, whether it be on Veterans Day, the Fourth of July Memorial Day, or the last few bars of the National Anthem, when the hairs on the back of your neck start to stand up. You will think about veterans that day. And when you think about veterans, will you ask yourself, "How did you support them? Did you support them in the way you felt like supporting them, or did you support them in the way that they begged and pleaded you to?" Thank you.
Kelly Fry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Kelly Fry. I am a U.S. Army veteran. I am also a nurse here at Riverside Medical Center, nurse lever, and I am also the founder of Buddy Check 22 Veteran Suicide Awareness. One of the most difficult things that I have experienced, not as a veteran, but as a nurse who's caring for my brothers and sisters, is when they come to the hospital and they've had an attempted suicide. They've suffered loss. And when it comes to discharging them home, it's literally bringing them down to the front door, and they have nowhere to go. We get them through their darkest times in that little moment that we are providing care for them. And yet it's devastating to think that in a community that supports our veterans so strongly, we do not have the resources to meet their needs as a human being, which is in shelter. I think what makes me successful and every one of us here today is the fact that we have a warm bed and a clean place to start our day and to end our day. My brothers and sisters who put their lives on the line and they raised their right hand and swore to defend our country deserve that same right. I know through my experiences that when given proper shelter, we can definitely start to see a significant decrease in the veteran suicide rates throughout the United States. And so that is why I am here, to ask you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Ashley Appleton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. I am the granddaughter of a World War II Navy veteran and the daughter of an Army Vietnam veteran. I am also a veteran service officer at the Cankey Key Veterans Assistance Commission. Before starting this job, I was like most of you. You see veterans on the street, you don't know what they're going through. But working with veterans now on a daily basis, I see the struggles that they go through daily without us even knowing. But I also see how hard they're trying to get their life back. They're trying to make a better life for themselves, for their families. What's sad is that people don't see that. They only see the homelessness. They don't see the individual or the veteran. They basically lose their identity. What they forget most is that these individuals sitting behind me, they fought to protect this country, and they went through literal hell to protect all of us, excuse my language. And even those who are wanting to vote no, they would still protect you. They would go back and go through all of that again. These homeless and low-income veterans do not deserve to be on the streets. They don't deserve to be wondering where they're going to sleep. If you are one of the people that are on the fence about this project, please take a minute and think about your own family, friends, who are in the military, whether past or present. Would you want them to be out on the street? Would you want them struggling in the freezing cold, trying to get their life back? Or would you want them to have a roof over their head, to be surrounded by other veterans who are able to help them, who understand, who can get them through this, so that they can get their life back? This permanent veteran supportive housing will change lives in a positive way. It will make a difference more than any of us could ever imagine. And that's what this community needs, positivity. These men and women who are homeless right now gave everything and are still giving everything to protect us. It's our turn to protect them. So please, vote yes on this. Thank you.
Eric Hanson.
Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Happy New Year. My name is Eric Hanson. I am the attorney for the Cankey County Housing Authority, who is the developer of the veterans project that's before you this evening. We are seeking your support and your approval of this very important project, we believe, for the city of Cankey Key. We're asking that you follow the recommendation of city staff, who approved or recommended approval of the project, and also the planning commission, the planning council, who unanimously recommended approval of this project as well. A couple of things I wanted to point out in terms of clarification, some things that are out there. One, this is not a temporary shelter. I want to make sure that's clear with everybody. This is permanent supportive housing for homeless veterans. The permanent portion of it is important because it provides stability to the veterans, to our residents. But also the supportive services, you've heard a little bit already from some of the comments, but the supportive services are very much in need, providing anything these veterans need to get them through, to get them to be a part of this community, to be active in this community as well. I believe you all have a rundown of the property itself and what we have planned. What I wanted to focus on also was the location, because I've heard some comments that this is not the right location, and we disagree with that entirely. You may have heard, we have been approved for $2.9 million for this project. The funding's been approved, or it's been recommended, I apologize. The 21st, the Illinois Housing Development Authority Board will approve the recommendation from their staff, $2.9 million in investment in the city of Cankey Key. It's 90% of the development costs. So this investment, or this application that we put in, I can tell you right now, location was a significant factor in our success. This location is close to all of the amenities that these veterans will need: grocery store, pharmacy, shopping, churches, government services. Veterans Assistance Commission is right down the street. But I think the thing I want to point out to is transportation. That is key. This facility is going to be about a block away from the shuttle that leaves daily to Heinz VA Hospital, that shuttle that also takes folks to the VA clinic over in Bourbon, A. You're in walking distance to two hospitals. I mean, this location is fabulous. And quite frankly, I couldn't think of a better location for this facility. We've heard that, is it a problem because it's too close to downtown? Is it the local businesses would be affected? I think when you have that discussion and you're looking at it, you have a situation where it's either or, and that is not the case. That is absolutely not the case. These are not mutually exclusive choices between a veterans' housing project and reestablishing downtown or the local businesses. They can thrive together. They can coexist. There's no question about that. We have supportive services. We've spoken with local businesses about employment, job training. There's no reason why this location couldn't be any better. So with that, when this item comes up 11A, and it is time to vote, when it does come time to vote on this, we're asking that you vote yes for an investment in the city of Cankey Key, that you vote yes to our veterans who need this facility, and vote yes for this conditional use permit to allow the project to go forward. This is the last step before our funding. We plan to close in the spring, begin construction and rehab, and be finished, hopefully by the end of the year, but probably early of 2023. This is the last hurdle, is this council's approval of a conditional use permit. So we ask for your support. Thank you for your time.
Kyle Healy.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, men, women, appreciate you guys' remarks thus far. I've never been a man of words. I've always been a man of action. I've served my country, I've served my community, and I'll continue to serve my brothers and sisters. I call them brothers and sisters because we're a family. We went through trials, tribulations, adversities, and we went through triumphs. One of those triumphs was coming home. But when we came home, we came home to broken relationships, broken families, broken jobs, and broken futures. We were given hope by our fellow men and sisters who served with us, and were given hope by some of these charity organizations that stand for us. A lot of our communities walked past us. I don't even see anymore. They just focus on their phones, focus on their own problems. We gave everything just to stand comfortably in our own lands. Brothers and sisters of this council, I ask you guys to consider this strongly, not for your sakes, but for the sakes of those who've already sacrificed. Like I said before, we'll do it again. We'll sacrifice again. But we'd like to have a place to step forth, we'd like to have a place to sleep at night. Let these men have a place to sleep, let these women have a place to take their children if they need to. This is a place that we should call home. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Next is Item 5. Roll call.
Brown. Jones.
Brown.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb. Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Crawford.
Present.
Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall. Prude.
Here.
Nine present, five absent.
We do have a quorum. Department heads?
Cass Water.
Here.
LaRose.
Here.
Hubel.
Present.
Powell.
Here.
Tyson. Tigash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Bertrand. Hoffman.
Present.
Frostall. Brewer Watson. Thank you.
Next on the list is Item 6. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes from Monday, December 20th, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, comments, or changes? Alderman Barron?
Mayor, under unfinished business, I have to pay for the minutes. I believe that there's a reference, there's two references to PB 2021-102A. It looks like that was passed twice. I think the second instance is supposed to be 22B. The first is the, it can be reversed, excuse me, the rezoning, the second is the conditional use.
Okay. I see your change. I'll fix that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or changes? Hearing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Minutes for Monday, December 20th, 2021 are approved. Next is Item 7, petitions. Item A.
Item A is PB 2021-11-2, an ordinance rezoning certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of C2 service commercial to a new zoning classification of R1 single-family residential at 2040 West Station Street.
These will be on for first reading. We do not have enough to suspend the rules tonight. But Mr. Hoffman, if you would like to give us a quick update on this one, if you can.
Yes, I do, Mayor. This is a property that is a house. It's been a house for over 50 years, I believe. But it is zone commercial, it's a zone C2 on Station slash extension of Court Street right next to a restaurant there. Several homes are adjacent to it, it's homes or south of it. The owner of the property would like to have its own residential. He's had some challenges getting some financing on the property because it isn't his own single-family residential. Hence, if there were a buyer or someone to destroy the property, it could be go with a single-family home. So, he's asked to rezon the property to its existing use of R1. The planning board held a hearing on this last month and voted unanimously to support the rezoning.
Thank you. So, there is no action on Item A. That will serve as first reading, and that will be on the next City Council for second reading. Item B.
PB 2021-11-1, an ordinance rezoning certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of C2 service commercial to a new zoning classification of R1 single-family residential at 191 South Chicago Avenue.
Similar to Item A, this will be first reading only tonight, and we will place on the council agenda on January 18th for second reading. Mr. Hoffman, I assume this is a very similar situation. Is Item A?
Yes. The church that owns it would like to possibly sell it. If this one was, had been used as an office for a little while, but it's clearly a single-family home, and they would like to be able to sell this as an effective property.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to number eight, Item A.
A presentation by the Kankakee Fire Department recognizing firefighter Guy Mazinov on his retirement after 29 and a half years of service.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We'd like to present our accommodation and also a retirement badge to firefighter Guy Mazinov. Will you come up with your family, please? Firefighter Mazinov decided to retire yesterday morning. He was, correct? He gave us notice, but he, yesterday morning was his last official day. He would have got off shift at 7:00 AM. He's been on vacation for the last couple of days, but he is, again, like I said, his last official day was Tuesday, or Monday, Sunday morning, sorry. He's been with us for 29 and a half years. He started his career as a firefighter August 1st, 1992, a long time ago. He achieved many certifications and many levels of accomplishments as a fire investigator, a arson investigator. He also was a juvenile fire setter, investigation specialist, holds numerous fire certifications. He's played a very major role in the county's fire investigation team. He's also trained many firefighters to be investigators. And when I started my career, I spent quite a bit of time on the ambulance with him, so he'll probably tell you that he taught me everything I know, at least at the back of the ambulance. He leaves us, again, with 29 years of service. We appreciate his time that he spent with us, all the dedication he has had for the fire department and for the fire investigations that he's put in. So, I'd like to award a certificate of accommodation for 29 years.
Thank you.
And also, present to you a retirement badge.
Get me out of a ticket.
Appreciate your hard work and dedication to the Kankakee Fire Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, 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 Mayor. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Next is item nine, standing committees. We have no reports tonight. Item 10 is reported officers. Item A.
Item A is city of Kankakee bills on the amount of $304,556.97.
Is there a motion for approval of the bills?
We have a motion here for officers.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions about the bills for the city of Kankakee? Seeing none? Oh, Alderman Navarez? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Next is item B.
Community Development Agency Bills on the amount of $21,529.98.
Is there a motion for the approval of the Community Development Agency Bills? Alderman Swanson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for the Community Development Agency in the amount of $21,529.98.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments about the bills from Community Development Agency? Hearing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Next is item C.
Environmental Services Utility Bills on the amount of $112,665.79.
Is there a motion to approve the bills from Environmental Services Utility? Alderman Swanson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for the Environmental Services Utility in the amount of $112,665.79.
Is there a second?
A second.
Alderman Prude, we have a motion from Alderman Swanson and a second from Alderman Prude. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye, but I need to abstain as to 31370, the order of electric supply due to conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Bills are passed. Next is item 11, unfinished business. Item A.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a group community residence, veteran housing, for Kankakee County Housing Development Corporation in the C2 zoning district at 210 through 214 South Washington Avenue in Kankakee. This is second reading.
Is there a motion or an action on this item? Alderman Navarez?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Kankakee Veterans County.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez for approval. We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Questions or comments regarding? Alderman Crawford?
Since we don't have a full council tonight, do we just leave a simple majority for this vote? Or do we still need a majority of elected?
So for this vote, because it's an ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, we go, but because it's not based on the number of members present, it's based on the number of members elected, so it would take eight votes per passage.
I would rather make a motion than to table this until we have the right amount of elected citizens for this vote.
We have a motion to table from Alderman Crawford. We have a second from Alderman Swanson. Roll call. This is a motion, this is a vote on the motion to table. Aye is for motion to table it. Nay is to reject the motion to table it. This is a simple majority of the Alderman present. At the 14 elected, of the Alderman present.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Staying due to potential conflicts of interest.
Prude.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstention.
So motion carries to table. Next is item 12, new business. Item A.
A recommendation to approve an agreement between the city of Kankakee and Tesco Associates Incorporated for the city planning and zoning support consulting.
This is a, the contract with Tesco and Associates has expired on December 31st of 2021. In talking with Mr. Hoffman, I'm actually very, I will say this, is we're very happy with the job that he's been doing in their firm with running our planning department, a lot of different things. So the contract in front of you is to extend that for another year. It's under the same terms and conditions as before. With the only change, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the hourly increase increases by $5, correct?
That's correct.
Trying to keep up with some of the cost of inflations and different things. So we're looking for a motion for approval to engage, to keep them. We have Alderman Swanson.
I made that motion.
And I saw Alderman Barron.
A second.
So we have a motion from Alderman Swanson and a second from Alderman Barron. Is there any questions or comments regarding the contract? Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Contract is approved. Next is item B. There's no appointments tonight. Item 13, motions and resolutions. Item A.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund.
This is in regards of, if you remember, at one of our ARPA meetings, it was not the last meeting, it was a meeting in November, we had allocated $200,000, and that had not got put on the agenda to move forward. So this is adding those funds to the ECDA department to utilize. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion from Alderman Marzak.
A second.
There's a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. There is no need for executive session tonight. We will move on to item 17, which is city council member comments. Is there any comments tonight from the city council? Alderman Jones?
Yes. I just want to say, I knew we were talking about the State House the other day. I see the actual jobs posted and everything. I would like to also see if we're going to hire the individual, he or she, that they would have a little bit of background. I saw the other day, I mean, the background of maybe gang violence, or been in the game, or something like that. Because you want somebody that's been there, understood what's going on, was in the game, got out of the game, turned their life around, things of that nature. Even if we don't give them that job, so they have somebody on staff that work closely with that. Because I'm really for it. We need to hear everything going on. We need, you know, definitely get that up around, I'm really for that. Not only to just add that and say that publicly, but we need to have somebody that, you know, have, be able to even talk to some of the guys on the street, you know? Not just a guy that's read a book, you know, and that's not going to be engaging. But who do we need to engage with to have a proper impact, I believe we could have once, you know, we select anyone, you know? I would hope that's in their thing, whoever that is that we're going to hire, just make sure that they have that piece with them.
And the ARPA funds that we allocated at the December meeting, we purposely held off till the January 18th meeting, when we expect to have full council for approval of those funds. And also, at that time, Carolyn will be back, our HR director. She's been on vacation for the holidays. We'll be able to meet with her and have her finish that job description and bring that forward, so. Alderman Crawford?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple different announcements. One, this month, we will be having a ordinance meeting at the end of the month, and it will be a full agenda with quite a few things on, so it's probably going to be a good hour meeting. Secondly, hopefully, at our next meeting that we have here, 17th, that will have a full agenda or a full council, so we can take a vote here for this veterans housing thing, we can get a vote on it, or if you're against it. Do all your homework. Let's either vote for it or vote against it, but let's get this done through these people for next meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Marzak?
Might be out of line, but I don't think it's out of line. I think when you got military individuals that fought for our country that take a vote for us, it shouldn't be a question at all.
Is there any department head comments? Hearing none? I just, under mayor comments, I just wanted to, a couple of things is Monday night, we will have a budget meeting. We expect it to be pretty, I don't want to say long, but a lot of impactful stuff there. We'll have our normal review of our finances. We also have the audit presentation that night, so we'll bring your detailed questions from the audit that was brought to you before. And we also have Neil there that night. He'll be presenting on Brookmont Boulevard what that means with going forward regarding funds and what it takes to get to completion and what we need to do there. Also, I'll be sending out an email, hopefully here this week, to all the Aldermen and Aldwomen. Being the start of 2022, I know a lot of us met back in August, but I'd like to start off the year again to see what your goals and objectives are for year 2022. And so we'll send it out, see if we can arrange some times to talk about what your needs are for each of your wards in the city going forward, so. With that, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy new year. We did keep the agenda a little bit light tonight, knowing that we are going to have several Aldermen that were absent tonight, Aldwomen, so we do expect a robust and hearty agenda on the 18th, and we look forward to seeing everybody then. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion for Alderman Prude.
A second.
Second from Alderman Navarez. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.